I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, September the 17th, 2024. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. And I was advised that tonight we have everything back up and running great, and we are being live on granberry.org. What's the slash?
Live.
Slash live. Granberry.org slash live. So we're now called to order. We will have the invocation. I'm gonna invite Ms. Mary Cardon with the Brazos Covenant Ministries to come forth. Please stand, and then we will do the pledges.
Good evening, and thank you for being city servants. I felt impressed about this today as I thought of you, thankfully that you serve for the good of society. Romans 13, "Don't owe anything to anyone except your outstanding debt to continually love one another; for the one who learns to love has fulfilled every requirement of the law. For the commandments, 'Do not commit adultery, do not murder, do not steal, do not covet,' and every other commandment can be summed up in these words: Love and value others the same way you love and value yourself." So Father, we thank you for these city servants tonight. Thank you for their willingness to lay down their lives to serve. We thank you, Father, that you poured the wisdom on them. Lord, that you have to love this city, to love this area, to love the people in it, and to serve for the good of the people. Father, we ask you tonight that you give them strength. Lord, that you hinder everything that would come against them. And, Lord, that you loose over them joy to serve. And we thank you tonight. Let this meeting be full of wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll join me now for the pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
We have three proclamations tonight, and then a presentation, and some thank yous to staff and others. Gentlemen, if you will join me. Thank you. You'll notice that we're a little light on council members tonight. We have a quorum for, is required for a quorum. So I've asked these three gentlemen, and I'll keep doing this, I'll keep asking, this, you're not special, okay? But I'll keep asking that they share with the proclamations, because the proclamations, while they get signed by the mayor, they get endorsed, loved, and everything else with the entire council and the city. So, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe that you are first, no, that is, Mr. Oberdear's first.
Thank you. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas Camp Fire Camp El Tesoro, established in 1934, has been an integral part of the Granberry community, providing a nurturing and educational environment where generations of young people have connected with nature and developed essential life skills, and whereas, for 90 years, Camp El Tesoro has been a sanctuary for children and teens from diverse backgrounds to engage in meaningful outdoor activities, form lasting friendships, and discover their true potential away from the distractions of modern technology, and whereas Camp El Tesoro's dedication to fostering a spirit of adventure, independence, and respect for nature aligns with the values of the city of Granberry, making it a cherished institution within our community, and whereas this esteemed nonprofit organization has enriched the lives of generations of campers through its commitment to comprehensive outdoor education, promoting self-reliance, teamwork, and environmental stewardship through its overnight camps, day camps, and outdoor education programs for schools, and whereas the 90th anniversary of Camp El Tesoro marks a significant milestone, celebrating decades of contributions to youth development and outdoor stewardship. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Granberry hereby proclaims September 27th through the 29th, 2024, as Camp Fire Camp El Tesoro 90th Anniversary Celebration Days in Granberry, and he urges residents to join in recognizing and celebrating this institution, which has played a pivotal role in shaping the lives of young people and strengthening our community, given under his hand and the seal of the city of Granberry on this 17th day of September, 2024."
Thank you. In my excitement, I only didn't do one thing, that was invite the Camp Tesoro people to receive this proclamation. Pardon me. Thank you. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Yeah. Thank you. We appreciate it. Could we have the, this is the Granberry Women's Club, correct? Okay. Any Women's Club members here tonight? No? Oh, yes, you're coming up. Come on. The picture, the, yeah, you've got, you know, thorns up here. We need some roses. Ladies?
All of you.
All of you. We'll tighten up.
Come on, we need some, we need some ladies over here. Greg, it's feeling a little...
All right. Official proclamation. Whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs is a 133-year-old international organization with more than 60,000 members dedicated to community improvement throughout volunteer service. And whereas the General Federation of Women's Clubs has designated September 28, 2024, as a national day of service, in which all members come together to raise awareness about food insecurity and take action. And whereas the Granberries Women's Club is an active member of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, and whereas the Granberry Women's Club will support Mission Granberry, Neighbors Feeding Neighbors, and other local groups on September 28, 2024, to provide meals, non-perishable food, and food kits for those food insecurities. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Granberry, Jim Jarrett of Texas, do hereby proclaim September 28, 2024, as Granberry Women's Club National Day of Service to battle food insecurity in Granberry.
I'm sorry. Thank you, ladies. Thank you so much. Who do we give the plaque to? The president right here, okay? Do you guys wanna move in a little bit closer over here? Or, no, that's not, keep coming. You can come out front. Keep coming. Keep coming. I think we can make two lines. Jeff, help us out here. What do you?
Lady next to councilmember over here, please move to this side. Yes, ma'am. Balance out. Five. Thank you, ladies. Step forward for me. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Mr. Corrigan.
All right. Can we have Mission Granberry up here?
We now know where to stand, Jeff. So we're back.
Right. Yeah. Y'all are up front.
Thank you.
Okay. That works. Excellent. All right. So whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that touches all communities regardless of age, race, disability, or socioeconomic status, and whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims, and whereas Mission Granberry received and responded to 950 domestic violence hotline calls last year. The need for safe housing continues to be rated as Survivor's Most Urgent Need, and whereas Mission Granberry provides a safe haven shelter for women and children who are victims of domestic violence. For victims that are not seeking shelter, Mission Granberry's non-residential programs provides victims with safety planning, counseling, case management, and resources. In fiscal year 2024, Mission Granberry's Family Violence Program provided services to 181 women, 132 children, and nine men. Now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, domestic violence programs, and victim service providers, Jim Jarrett, the mayor of the city of Granberry, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Granberry, and urge all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact it has on our community, given under the mayor's hand and seal of the city of Granberry, Texas, on this 17th day of October, 2024.
Yep. You know, as they're setting up for the photos there, it occurs to me that 950 is almost three a day, every day of the week, every day of the year. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Can I say something?
Certainly.
Okay. First of all, thank you for the continued support of Mission Granberry. I want to point out the purple candle that I have right here. In October, we're gonna hold a ceremony, a candlelight vigil on the square for all the victims who lost their lives in 2023 in Texas that were victims of domestic violence. So that will be October 22nd, I think, at 7:00 PM. And we'll have the victims' names attached to a candle just to honor them. That's all I needed to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Raise that candle so I can see the candle.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you again very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And councilmember Rodriguez, councilmember Corrigan, councilmember Oberdare, thank you. Appreciate the, appreciate the help. By the way, these gentlemen have been practicing all on this, well, a couple of minutes right before the meeting.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. On our agenda tonight, we've got a renewal of a contract, I think it's the 10th anniversary. But more importantly, it's Mary Lester, and she's with us tonight, and it's her birthday, a little birdie told me. So we want to say happy birthday to Mary Lester. She has been helping our tourism department. I think this is our 10th year, maybe 11th, I'm not sure. Am I right? Number 10? So we've been using her services a long time, and it's really paying off for us. So shout out to that. Then I want to mention some folks that aren't here. They're our unsung heroes tonight. I sent you an email about the water treatment plant, and all that's going on with our water production, and the two pumps that are out, out of the three that suck water out of the lake, and how we're waiting on the subcontractors to come and repair what we need to do. Meanwhile, these guys are working around the clock, ensuring that our water is flowing, and maximizing the well sources that we have, and that one lonely pump that's still remaining in the lake, working like a little Trojan. So I just want to say, thank you to the water department, the guys at the water treatment plant. They never come to council meetings. Maybe they'll see this on the video, but I want to thank them for all they do for us. And then the other unsung heroes are the team at the wastewater treatment plant. As you know, we've gone through a huge remodel of that project. We've been working on that since 2019, and we're through with it, except for one last piece of equipment that has to be installed, a electronic metering device. And other than that, we've been able to complete the transition of remodeling from the old sewer system to the new sewer system, without any notice of violations from the state, without any problems administratively, operationally, and that's due to a great staff of Billy Massey and his team. And so I want to just say thank you to those two departments tonight. They're our utility department, but they're a subgroup of our public works department, and they do an outstanding job. And nobody is in a hurry to run out to that sewer plant and shake them by the hand. I can promise you that. But they deserve it. So anyway, that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I ask council, when you talked about the sewer plant, now that's the same thing you told me to always call the Water Reclamation Union, right? Okay, good. Yes, those people absolutely deserve everything you do. Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Oberdear? Would you like to say something, you know, Mr. Vale, I'm sure?
I can speak to Mr. Vale?
Yes.
No, I can't speak there.
Very good. Steve and Dr. Wadley both have family opportunities tonight, and so they're taking them, and we're blessing them for that. Okay. Let's move right on to public comments. No, we have no public comments that signed up tonight. So I'm gonna move on down to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council or staff wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered after the deliberation agenda. I've been notified that 6-7 and 6-8, you would like to pull off, Mr. Kaufman? Has some additional words to say on that? So that would be the consent agenda, 6-1, 6-2, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, 6-6, and 6-9, if there is a motion to approve the remaining, or if anyone else has some.
So moved.
There's a motion, there's a second. So all in favor of approving 6-1, 6-2, 6-3, 6-4, 6-5, 6-6, and 6-9, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. The ayes have it, 4-0. Okay. That'll move us into the deliberation agenda, and I'll open with 6-7. Consider approving the annual expenditure for Simple View LLC, provider of website consulting and design services, content management, and customer relation management solutions. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. In consultation with city attorney yesterday, we decided we needed to address this a little bit. The contract in itself is below the limit that requires us to put it on the city council agenda, but there are times when there are services that we engage with Simple View beyond what's in the contract agreement, and so it would exceed the $50,000 window. And so I would recommend that we approve the action, approve the annual expenditure for Simple View LLC for website consulting and design services, content management, and customer relation management solutions in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And the way we had it was kind of open-ended and didn't really look good for the attorney. And when I read it, I quickly agreed that we missed that. So we missed it. So we got that fixed. So that's what staff has recommended to you.
Questions? Mr. Rodriguez?
So Chris, how'd you come up with that figure?
Well, we've never spent that much.
Yep.
But I wanted to make sure that Tammy had the flexibility to do internal budget amendments in the event she needed to use it. So I could make it a lower number if you like, but we're not talking about increasing her budget. We're talking about just spending more in that category than she would have probably otherwise, if needed be. Really, she's not gonna change anything, probably, but we want to give her the flexibility. It's all within the same line item, more than likely. Simple View isn't one line item in the budget. It's conglomerated into a whole bunch of items, so.
What's our annual expense on that, you know?
The contract's $44,000 and some change. So I'm saying, give her some room if she needs to do some special marketing or something through that, that we can. And I'm not sure historically, our finance director is on vacation and taking care of some family business in Europe. So do you want to say anything, Tammy?
I guess I didn't get the memo to leave either. I mean, I need to go on vacation. I need to go.
How you think I feel?
I know. I can't believe.
So we've never really gone over that, and occasionally, the last two years, we have sent somebody to training, and a lot of that training is covered in this contract. But what we have found is there's some small tweaks sometimes on the website that are not included in our contract, that we have no plans to use, but it's so close to the $50,000 point that we just wanted to bring it to the council's attention. And so we did not anticipate it, and we did also just learn that some of our service hours can be applied to some of these trips that they just made us aware of, not for any travel. But just in case any invoice comes through with Simple View, the thing that comes to mind is, like, we did a website refresh. We were able to do it all under the contract, but there was a question of $500 that was not included in the contract last year. So it's just right on the edge, and we just want to be transparent with it.
So Tammy, like, the suggestion is $70,000. I mean, would $50,000 cover those extra expenses that you're talking about?
Well, like I said, I do not have any expenses in mind at all right now, but $50,000 would make me feel more comfortable that we're good to go, but that's really a Jeremy question. I don't...
So how we came up with this is, when we talk about procurement, right, we can't go out and say, we're gonna buy one computer for the PD, and so we don't have to bring that to council because it's less than $50,000. If we know during the course of a year we're gonna exceed that aggregate cost for the same thing, in this case, the same contract, and the number, and I'm not exactly right on this, but I did ask Ava what the number was last year, and it was 49 and right up to $50,000. So the point of this is to say, okay, look, because this contract is annual, if she gets something and says, well, this is $100, so now we're at $50,000 and $100, do you want her to bring every $150 item here to council? Because in the aggregate, under the procurement laws, she's gonna have to have every single one of those $100, $300, $400, $200 expenditures. Although she doesn't anticipate getting to 70, we thought that's probably a safe number that she's likely not going to spend or get to, but to be able to adhere to the procurement laws and not have us be inundated with, like, literally, it could be a $100 expense for some addition to the website. As we went back and looked at some of the things and the costs in the contract itself, and most likely, the majority of that money's gonna roll back over into the budget next year, but that was just a number that we got to, that we said, that's a pretty safe number. It's more than gonna cover everything, and we're gonna avoid having to deal with a procurement issue over $50,000, because that contract in the aggregate now is over 50, because it was right there last year.
Yep. And realize we're not increasing how much she's gonna spend overall in her budget. So if she wanted to spend more in Simple View than some other line item in her budget, all she'd have to do is move it, but she can't do that if we don't create a limit. Follow me? Because the law says we've got to bring it back and amend that budget to allow that contract to exceed that amount. So really, we're just, we could go $60,000, we could go $55,000, whatever you want to do, but we're just trying to create the flexibility to where we're not having to bring back another agenda item. If she needs to, if something happens on the website and she needs to update something that she didn't plan on, that's not in the contract, we need to have the flexibility.
So what I'm hearing is that Tammy's budget is not, she doesn't get any more budget.
Right.
She doesn't get any more budget, and this is what I, it's the closest to being a procurement issue.
It's a procurement.
Yeah. And it's probably the most volatile. I mean, it's the one that if something is needed, it's gonna be $10,000, $5,000. It's not gonna be 200 or 300.
It's a great, it's a great website and engine, and it does a lot of metrics for us, and they could probably even enhance some of those services if they had more money.
But at the end of the day, Tammy has no more money.
Right. We're not giving her any more money.
Okay.
We're just letting her spend the money she has in a different way if needed. If her discretion says, I'd rather spend it here than on a Facebook post.
Yes.
You know, something like that.
And just to clarify that, this, exactly what the mayor said, this is merely a legal procurement issue that we are making certain is in the right place. If there was something to be added budget-wise, a budget amendment would come back before you.
Okay. Other? No? Okay. I do need a motion to approve the annual expenditure for Simple View LLC, provider of website consulting and design services, content management, customer relation management solutions, to not exceed $70,000.
So moved.
Mr. Oberdare moves. Corrigan seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That will be passing 4-0. 6.8. Consider accepting the withdrawal of Vin Ken Inc., request to amend a planned development light commercial located at 5260 East US Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah. This is a carryover from two meetings ago, where we, at the last minute before the council meeting, received a letter from the engineer that represents BMW Oil and Gas LLC, and they were looking to get their planned development to include an SUP to be able to sell fuel cells at the proposed location of 5260 East US Highway 377. So what happened was we didn't understand the request, so we tabled it until the last meeting, and then we tabled it again to this meeting for more questions to be answered. And so we received a letter that says, well, you've got your withdrawal correspondence there, from Brendan McCartel, PE, and he is the engineer that represents BMW.
solutions, to not exceed $70,000.
So moved.
Mr. Oberdehr moves. Corrigan seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That will be passing four and oh. Six point eight. Consider accepting the withdrawal of Vinken Inc., request to amend a planned development light commercial located at 5260 East US Highway 377. Mr. Kaufman?
Yeah. This is a carryover from two meetings ago where we, at the last minute before the council meeting, received a letter from the engineer that represents BMW Oil and Gas LLC, and they were looking to get a, their planned development to include an SUP to be able to sell fuel cells at the proposed location of 5260 East US Highway 377. So what happened was we, we didn't understand the request, so we tabled it until the last meeting, and then we, we tabled it again to this meeting for more questions to be answered. And so we received a letter that says, well, you've got your withdrawal correspondence there from Brendan McCartel PE, and he is the engineer that represents BMW Oil and Gas. And, and so what, what, let's figure this out. In a layered situation, Vinken is the owner of the real estate. Before Allsups got involved, that's BMW Oil and Gas, before they got involved, Vinken had applied and received a planned development approval for the land. It did not include the SUP for the gas sales, diesel sales. So what was really being requested to be withdrawn isn't what Vinken had already been vested with, it's with the application that Allsups was pursuing. And so what we would recommend, consider accepting the withdrawal of BMW Oil and Gas LLC to amend the plant, withdraw that from then instead of Vinken. We hate for Vinken to have gone through what they've gone through, and it all go away, because they may still need that planned development. It's theirs. It's, it's not belonging to Allsups. So Allsups was trying to amend it to fit their needs. Does that make sense? Oh, boy. All right. So, okay, I was going to put it in simplistic terms, like, I own a house, somebody's wanting to rent it, and they need an SUP to be able to do what they want to do. We don't, we don't want to make that person lose their ownership of what they're vested in there just because we withdrew the SUP. So the SUP is a separate issue. It's, it's folded into that planned development wording because it's a zoning issue, and so that's, that's what's being withdrawn. And.
So how does this?
So Chris, tell us what the motive.
Yeah.
Because that's what's the recommended.
Instead of where it says Vinken Inc.
So consider accepting the withdrawal.
BMW Oil and Gas LLC. I think that'll give us it. B and W. B and W.
B as in boy.
Yeah. BMW Gas and Convenience.
Oh, thank. BMW Gas and Convenience LLC, also known as Yes Way and Allsups. So they're withdrawing from that location. So that's the second convenience store that's withdrawn from that location. So we don't know what's going on with the sale, or, you know, we don't know the, the chemical makeup of how, the chemistry of how these guys are coming together to make a deal, but they're not gee-hawing good enough to close, I guess. So we're, we're on the peripheral, trying to facilitate the zoning entitlement for them before they close, and it, and the deal, deal rails before we could even consider it, so.
So mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
I, I make the motion to accept.
Hold, could I, could I just, for clarification, I want to be clear, this is B as in Bravo in November?
And.
A and D. Okay. Got it. A per cent. Okay. W. Got it. Okay. Mr. Rodriguez?
I make the motion to accept the withdrawal of BMW Gas and Convenience LLC, requesting the amend a planned development light commercial located at 5260 US Highway 377.
Okay. Second. Mr. Oberdehr seconds. Mr. Rodriguez has made the motion. Discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Six point eight will be passing at four and oh. Very good. Thank you. Move to seven point one. This will be a public hearing, and we'll call for the public hearing after staff has had their presentation. Consider adopting ordinance number 2455, extending a moratorium through October the 4th, 2025, within the eastern corporate city limits and the extraterritorial jurisdictional limits of Granbury on all applications for plants as authorized by law and notice pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 212 dot 134. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. As we are all aware of, our city is under a moratorium. There's two ordinances that cover our city for the moratorium, and this is the first one. And it's the first one because we began on the east side of town and worked our way through the other side of town in the subsequent weeks following this initially passed back in 2020. So our current moratorium will expire on October 4th, 2024, and so we're asking to renew this for another year through this ordinance. We, we posted the proper notice, we've got our memo from our engineer attached to this document. Administratively, this agenda item is complete, and, and in order for it to be enacted, we need to adopt ordinance number 24 dash 25, extending this moratorium through October 4th, 2025. This is the east side of the city water watershed, or the sewer shed of the east side. So be happy to answer any questions you may have, and I will tell you that the construction of the new plant is coming along. They're doing a great job. Chester Nolan is here if you need to ask any questions related to any of this. This is his agenda item. I'm just trying to save time and, and tell you what's happening as quick as possible.
For clarification, I heard, and that doesn't mean it's right, I heard 2425? It is as written, 2455?
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a bad number I had here, inverted.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
I'd like to ask questions to Chester if he's available.
He is.
Chester, hopefully this is our last moratorium that we extend. How is the progress going with the, the current, or the east wastewater treatment facility?
Well, the east plant right now is approximately a month ahead of schedule. The project manager and the inspector that's on the job, I speak with them two, three times a week. Everything is on track, and they're projecting that we may finish as early as two months ahead of schedule, which will put it early '26, late '25. So everything out there right now is just going great guns. Their construction is moving forward. We've poured about, I think, a little over 4,000 yards of concrete so far. Most of the structures are, are built. They're putting in the piping and putting in the electrical part of it, so idiots all moving, moving great right now.
Well, you got six months. That's what I'm going to give you.
Well, we'll try.
All right. Hey, thank you for the update. I was there when they first started, and I couldn't believe the amount of how deep they went into, into the ground, and it was just amazing how they, they've come along so far. So thank you for overlooking that.
Lots of dirt moving, lots of rock having to be moved, so they've done a great job so far.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
That's all, that's all the questions I have.
Mr. Oberdehr, Mr. Corrigan? Anything else? Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this seven point one ordinance here, this request. I see no one raising their hand or standing up, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any more discussion? No more discussion. I'd like to hear a motion to consider adopting ordinance, or adopting ordinance number 2455, extending a moratorium through October the 4th, 2025, within the eastern corporate city limits and the extraterritorial jurisdictional limits of Granbury on all applications for plants as authorized by the law and notice pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 212 dot 134.
So moved.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It is approved four and oh. Move to seven point two, also a public hearing, and this is to adopt ordinance number 2456, extending the moratorium through October the 4th, 2025, within the central and western corporate city limits and the extraterritorial jurisdictional limits of Granbury on all applications for plants as authorized by law and notice pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 212 dot 134. Mr. Kaufman?
So this is literally the same song, second verse, per code and Texas state law. Only difference is we're including the central and western corporate city limits, which basically is our entire city. And so if projects aren't grandfathered, or what they call vested under the, those conditions that are stated by law, that we can't accept plats and move forward with new projects. So I just wanted to add that as part of the conversation since we didn't cover that in the last one. But same thing, administratively complete, ready to go. Staff's been working behind the scenes for about 60 days on these ordinances to make sure we have everything right for y'all tonight to worry, when you approve this ordinance, we're administratively sound and can move forward in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Counsel? This too is a public meeting, or a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone that would like to speak, raise your hand, stand. I see no one, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other comments? See? Hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 24 dash 56, extending the moratorium through October the 4th, 2025, within the central and western corporate city limits and the extraterritorial jurisdictional limits of Granbury on all applications for plats as authorized by law and notice pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 212 dot 134.
So moved.
Mr. Oberdehr makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Corrigan seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. It two is approved six, or four and oh. Thought we'd get through the night without doing that. Okay. Seven point three. Consider approving work order number 47 for engineering services with N-Protec, Hibbs and Todd, and the City of Granbury for the Elizabeth and Penrod Boulevards Water Main Replacement Project number 16 dash 6523, under the general services agreement and the lump sum basis for $73,000, and an estimated $32,000 for time and materials testing tasks for a total estimated compensation of $105,000. And consider adopting ordinance number 24 dash 57, amending the operating budget for the utility fund for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Mr. Sorrell, is this one or two motions when we get to that?
We'll figure that out.
Yeah, I would do a both separate.
Yeah, separate.
Okay.
So this project, I sent y'all a brief email about some situations, and this is, this is a good swipe at trying to resolve a couple of issues. So what, about a month ago, we had to send out notices, we had high levels of lead in our water, and so we've been dealing with that. But prior to that, we've got a couple of neighbors in this neighborhood that's been experiencing red in their pipes, coming out their water pipes. Come, doing a little research, they're, they're supplied by cast iron pipes. Those cast iron pipes are connected together with lead solder, probably installed 70 to 80, maybe even 90 years ago. Not sure how old that subdivision is, but that's pretty old technology to be using cast iron, so those pipes are old. And so we proposed to move forward to exchange those and put in new pipes, and in the meantime, we've been flushing the fire hydrants on those lines on a regular basis to keep the, the rust, or what's apparent to be rust, out of the pipes, the cast iron. Also, I want y'all to know that we used to use a different type of flocculent at the water treatment plant, and the TCQ has, it contained aluminum in it, and so TCQ has come up with a new EPA rule to remove that from our process, and we had to go to a product called ferric sulfate, and we've been using that for quite a while. And it seems like that when we did that, it exacerbated this discoloration in these people's pipes over in this neighborhood. Chester's been working with these people. I have not been to the location, but he and his team have been out there. And so I asked him, let's put something together quickly to address this problem. It's, it's about 2,500 feet of piping, if I'm not mistaken, so it's not going to be cheap. You can see by the cost of engineering, it's $100,000 for that, so it's probably a million-dollar project when it's all said and done to replace those pipes, maybe more than that with construction costs like the way they are. We do have Chris Hay here, he's our engineer on this project, and he could answer any questions you may have. Chester can step up and speak as well if I've missed something, but in the, in the overall scope of things, we have more of these cast iron pipes that we need to be looking at in the future. There's also another mandate coming our way, and we've been working on that. It's called the lead and copper testing, and that's why we had those lead tests. By the way, we retested the same homes, just for the public to know, I know I've already told y'all, but those same homes that we tested that showed elevated lead in their water actually had very small trace of lead the second time we tested. So there's something going on with the testing lab, or something was contaminated in the bottles or something, because we've never had a lead test with those kind of results in the past. And so we will be testing those same properties again in, in the next quarter, and I'm expecting to see the same good results again. But still, we've got red coming out to this lady's house where she can't wash white clothes, and we've offered to provide bottled water, she did not decline that. So anyway, we're trying to address the problem in the neighborhood, and I know that this one on Elizabeth Street has been a pervasive problem for quite some time, but we included that with Penrod to, to address both of them as we move forward here. The, the big problem is Penrod is what we're dealing with. The guys right now are replacing a, about a 400-foot of pipeline on Bridge, or you know, Pearl Street in-house. We're doing that with forced labor ourselves, but this job is too big for in-house, and that's why we're looking to get it engineered and, and put it out for bid and see what it costs. And then we'll bring those bids back to you, and we'll, we will find the funding somewhere in our resources to cover this.
Okay.
When the time comes. Any questions for us, staff, engineer, whatever, we're here.
Comments? No? I can recall walking this area when I was campaigning, and you hear about it, that's for sure. Any other comments? No? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve work order number 47 for engineering services with N-Protec, Hibbs and Todd, and the City of Granbury for the Elizabeth and Henbro, Penrod Boulevards Water Main Replacement Project number 16 dash 6523, under the general services agreement and the lump sum basis for $73,000, and an estimated $32,000 for time and materials testing, or testing tasks for a total estimated compensation of $105,000. That'll be one motion.
So moved.
Mr. Corrigan makes a motion?
Second.
Mr. Oberdehr, seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass four and oh. Do I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 24 dash 57, amending the operating budget for the utility fund for fiscal year 2023 and 2024?
So moved.
Second.
I hear a motion and a second. Mr. Rodriguez on the motion, or Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Corrigan made the motion, Mr. Oberdehr second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That too will be, will be approved at four and oh.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I think it's well investment here. This is needed to be done.
All right. We're going to move into executive session. I'm going to now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes in open session, and that four members are present. Mr. Vail and Mr. Widley are not present. City council will go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. One, 551.07, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551.07, two, deliberation regarding real, real property. 551.07, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We are now in executive session. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes in open session. There was no action taken in closed session, and the four council members present are present as we, as we reconvene. Do we have other business to conduct?
Mayor?
Mr. Corrigan?
And make a motion to authorize the city manager to issue to Fort Worth and Western Railroad a notice of termination of lease as to the property. Western Railroad a notice of termination of lease as to the property located at one-oh-nine East Yule, Yule Street, Granbury, Texas.
Okay. I hear a motion. I hear a second.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That's approved four and oh. Is there other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corrigan.
Move to authorize the city manager to execute a reversion deed, granting the property located at eight-oh-five Lipan Highway to the Plexi River Children's Advocacy Center pursuant to Texas Local Government Code two-five-three point zero-one-one.
Great.
Second.
Mr. Overdare seconds. Mr. Corrigan's motion there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is passing four and oh. Thank you. Is there anything, any other?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corrigan?
One more. Make a motion to move to authorize the city manager to finalize the final GMP with Pepper Lawson Water Works.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Overdare makes a second. No discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Is there anything else? Nothing else? And, uh, we're comfortable with those, uh, those motions and those approved motions, knowing that the city manager's leaving on vacation. I guess you were leaving on vacation.
I am.
Good. Okay. Timeliness is good. Very good.
You're good.
All right. There being no other business, I announce this meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.